Call meeting to order, Nancy with you, Carl.
Yes. Mr. Rungy absent, Dr. Corley absent, Mrs. Dorr.
Here.
Mr. Green.
Here.
Mrs. James.
Here.
Mrs. Miller absent, Mr. Beavers.
Here. Let's begin with by Mr. Green.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is approval agenda, Mr. Grody, any questions?
No changes.
No changes, all entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion on a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. Number five, approval of consent agenda, which includes District 186 regular board meeting minutes dated 3/20 of 18. District 186 special board meeting minutes dated 3/15 18. Tri-county regular board meeting minutes dated 3/7 18. Tri-county bills for April 2018, applications and reports.
It's 3/5. I'm sorry.
3/15.
What was 15? Oh, mine says 5. 3/5.
Right, 3/5.
3/5, okay. My glass is no more. Motion to approve those.
A motion.
Second?
Second. Motion a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. Item number six, approval of District 26 bills for April 2018, any questions?
I have a few. Let's see. Board of Education expense to be reimbursed, $36.90, page one. I believe that was meal reimbursement, to be reimbursed back to the district for Illinois ASO. When I travel, I use my card and they reimburse for not only meals but also for mileage on this review. Admin purchase SBC, there's four of them.
What page?
Same page, page one. I believe those were for previous administrative launches from before the last meeting. On those four, meeting with, like, I can't tell you, I know, one with Mr. Rungy, one with, but...
But we're not doing those anymore?
No, we're not. Those were for, those were from February and got paid on the March American Express bill.
I had page eight, the fourth and the last page. The covert replacement on that, did we have other bids?
We did. We had two competitive bids.
Had, you know, were they close?
Probably within a couple thousand, I think.
Okay.
Or maybe...
Was it the lowest or was it?
It was the lowest.
Everyone was the lowest.
And then on the same page, the $6,500, the PLP for high school data center replacement battery.
Those were for all, the backup batteries, battery backups for the high school data centers. There were, I forget how many. Steve's above. Sometimes he will text me the answers to questions. Steve, do we know how many? I can find out though and answer that question, but yeah, those are for many multiple, for battery backup replacements.
Can I back up and just kind of spin off the covert replacement? That was, did the city take on any part of that, is that?
No. No, that's all, that's all ours. Steve says 300-plus batteries.
City road won't start till you make the curve out of the gate. That was inside the gates.
You've taken care of that road?
Yeah. Once you turn where that gate actually hit, 16 is the city.
Page five, the Hearst Roche engineers, how much are we paying them? It seems like every month there's about $12,000 for these same three things.
On every job, it's, there's so much that gets attributed to contracts and to, you know, work. So there's a total at the end, but we basically pay progress on those jobs.
So what is the total for, like, the playground drainage? And did they just do the engineering of it and then?
Yeah, they worked with, the general is looking at getting new playground equipment to make sure it's not underwater. They're looking at the drainage. So what they did was they worked with the playground company that the PTA is working with to make sure that the stuff, so they designed it, but um...
So they just did the engineering of the drainage, right?
All that was is just for them to go out there and look at it and say the flow needs to go this way.
Right, but they took some measurements and stuff like that and so, and it ultimately is going to probably be the lift station, but...
Right, but I guess my question is like, how much are we paying them just to do the engineering for the drainage? And how much are we paying them just to do the engineering for the elevator and the auditorium? Because each month, when I look at the previous month's bills, we're paying like about $8,000 a month for the auditorium project and about $4,300 a month for the elevator. Five to $800 a month for the playground. I mean, how much engineering did they do?
I can check. That's a good question.
I wasn't real impressed with the cost for what little they do.
Well, right.
Out there and say, yeah, you got a water problem and you're going to need, I mean, I could have gone out there and taken a shovel.
I mean, a day's worth of work, I'm confused why we're paying them $50,000.
I can check those. We have, on the, I know on the two big projects, you know, we have contracts that we signed with them. And I have the, you know, I can tell you what those progress are, progress bill in each time. I don't know off the top of my head about the general, but I can, I can get those totals and get that out to the board after the, after the meeting.
On the same page, looks 819 Molna, which assumes ROE, ROE building?
Yes, yes.
Roof repair, did we, we cover that?
It is. That's the one thing in our, in our contract with the ROE, roof and outside of the building. So extra windows, but anything inside is on them. But that's in our contract that any roof repairs we made, be borne by the district.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. Page nine, the one-year renewal with threat prevention, the speed link, what is that? I had, I added the threat prevention because it has to do with our, our network, our district network system and all the protection, the software protection.
Anti-virus.
Yeah, firewall kind of things. Yeah, that's, that's, we, we budget and payment every year to speed link. Firewall services and updates, that's what.
There's another, now entertain a motion to approve the bills for April 2018.
So moved.
In a second?
Okay, you want me to split? Okay. Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Dr. Corley absent, Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy absent and Mr. Beavers.
Yes. Moving on to item number seven, new things.
I have a few. To whom it may concern, please accept this as my letter of resignation from the position of head cheer coach at Murphysboro Middle School effective May 31, 2018. As this year is coming to a close, I have been reminded how difficult it can be to juggle students in more than one building. With my daughter being active at the high school, I have sometimes felt as though I wasn't giving as much to the girls on my team as in the past. I have enjoyed all the relationships that have formed over the years with both students and parents. The middle school cheer team has grown to do so much more than cheer at boys' basketball games. They also cheer the girls' basketball team, send Christmas cards to veterans at the VA hospital, patients at St. Joe's Hospital and the school staff. They help with wrapping gifts for all of our Secret Santa projects, have adopted a family over the holidays, helped for the past three years with the annual Tender Mercy's Candle lighting event, donations to food pantry and the women's center. They have all been active in many extra, other extracurricular activities while cheering. I am very proud of all of these girls, past and present. The staff and administration at the middle school have been very supportive through the years and it hasn't been unnoticed. I am willing to do whatever I can to make the transition for someone new to be as smooth as it can be. Respectfully submitted, Michelle Mifflin, Leavens.
Recommendations to accept her resignation.
Recommendation administration, you have motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
To whom it may concern, this letter is to notify you that my husband and I are expecting a baby and wish to take maternity leave. My due date is currently August 17, but I have scheduled a C-section on August 10, 2018. I anticipate beginning maternity leave on the first day of school for the 2018-19 school year. I intend to apply my sick days to my leave and then take an unpaid leave of absence until I return on October 9, 2018. These dates are subject to change due to unforeseen circumstances with my pregnancy and delivery. Please contact me if you should have any questions concerning this. Sincerely, Kelsey Royer.
Recommendations to approve her leave.
And recommendations to have motion to approve.
So...
Carry second. Motion a second, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carry.
Dear school board, I Deborah Miller, intend to retire June 30, 2018, under the IMRF Early Retirement Incentive. I have truly enjoyed working for the district all the past years. While I look forward to enjoying my retirement, I will miss being part of the district. I find that this retirement is bittersweet, bittersweet as I am excited to start a new chapter in my life but sad to end another one. Thank you for all of your years of working. And again, it's Debbie Miller and she's an EOCA.
Recommendation is to approve her retirement.
Recommendation to have a motion?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Motion a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carry.
What was the date Nancy?
The date of Hearst.
The date of her retirement?
The 30th.
Which one?
June 30.
June 30.
Yeah, this year. Dear Mr. Grody and Board of Education, I would like to give notice of my intent to retire effective June 30, 2018, under the ERI program. I want to take this opportunity to thank the board for all of their support. I have been employed by the district for 29 great years. I have worked with a lot of wonderful staff and students and will miss many of them greatly. Sincerely, Linda Crane. And she's the secretary.
The recommendation is to approve Ms. Crane's retirement.
And recommendation for the administration to have motion to approve.
So moved.
And they say, motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carry.
Dear Mr. Grody and Board of Education, I am submitting my intent to retire effective June 30, 2018, under the ERI program. I would like to thank the board for the opportunities and support given over the past 30 years. I would also like to thank the many staff members that I have worked with and most importantly, the wonderful students. Thank you, Doris Rungy, monitor.
Recommendations the same.
Another recommendation, have motion to approve. So moved, in a second.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carry.
Dear Mr. Grody and School Board, I am submitting my letter to retire as of June 30, 2018, under the ERI program. I would like to take this opportunity to thank all staff for a long career in education. I have enjoyed working with the wonderful students in our community and I will miss them. Thank you very much. Sincerely, Cash McGarner, pair of pro.
And the recommendation is to approve her retirement.
Have another recommendation to have motion to approve.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Motion a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carry.
We received a verbal resignation from Jennifer Porter, who is a cook. So effective immediately, she has resigned.
Recommendation on that one would be of course to accept their resignation.
Recommendation, I have motion to approve.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carry.
Dear Mr. Keener, please accept this letter as notice of my resignation from the eighth grade writing teacher position. John and I have made the decision to move to the Cleveland area to live closer to family. Working at Murphysboro Middle School for the past seven years has been a pleasure and I will deeply miss the students, teachers and the family atmosphere you fostered. Leaving Murphysboro is one of the hardest decisions that I have ever made. I will finish the remainder of the year but will not return for the 18-19 school year and hope that the district can make a smooth transition when hiring my replacement. I want to thank everyone at the middle school for the opportunities and success I have had while teaching here. I will be leading fellow teachers and staff who have been more than just coworkers for the past seven years. They have been like a second family to me. The only reason our family was successful during my husband's continuous absences for National Guard deployments, drills and training is because of the continuous support we receive from the staff, district and our friends in Murphysboro. My children have received the best support and guidance during their seven years of growth in this district and town. I am profoundly thankful for the support. It is with a heavy heart that we leave the city of Murphysboro. Respectfully yours, Carly Crystal.
We recommend her resignation. Sad to see her go.
Intertain a motion to approve.
No motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion a second, all in favor aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carry. I just wanted to add one that I said before I got here that keep, Mike Cribbs, our former president, him and his family, he's having a, had a procedure done that didn't take like they liked, so Friday he's scheduled for a bypass surgery in Barnes. I don't know if it's single, double, but just keep his family and our thoughts and prayers. Move on to number eight, fishbowl items.
I'll go first. The park assessment and Illinois science assessment went off without a hitch. Mrs. Davidson did an excellent job coordinating the assessments in her first year at Carruthers. The school leadership team hosted fun nights on March 26, 27 and 28. This was the first year of the fun nights. 91 third graders attended March 26, 88 fourth graders attended on March 27, 105 fifth graders attended on March 28. Many faculty members assisted with supervision and several attended all three evenings. Their efforts are very much appreciated. Mr. Beaver.
Mr. Navarro writes, congratulations to MMS Blue Devils head coach, volleyball coach Mike Lane, assistant coach Jessica Whitehead, Fred Schnouts, Annalisa Parker, Lisa Shields, Mike and Marian Loughlin and the members of the 2017-18 MMS Blue Devils volleyball team. On Saturday, March 24, the team won the SIJHSAA Class L State Championship for the second consecutive season. Along the way, the team also captured the SIJHSAA Regional Championship for the eighth straight year. On March 12, the Blue Devils defeated Chester. This win was significant because a team won the Junior Southwest Egyptian Conference title for the eighth straight season. It was also a career milestone for Coach Lane. This victory marked the 1,000th combined career win while coaching volleyball for the Murphysboro School District at both middle and high school levels. Congratulations to the Blue Devils volleyball program on these remarkable accomplishments.
I have kind of an update from Melinda Pearson regarding the high school. On March 23, faculty and staff participated in the active shooter training provided by the Jackson County Sheriff's Department. Was it the city?
It was the sheriff's. Yeah, the city was, was there, but it was the Jackson County that was...
This was an intense and eye-opening experience that provided a vast amount of insight about what is needed to secure our school. Mr. Ellemeyer not only participated alongside the staff but was also very active in advocating for additional safety measures to secure the building. We look forward to working with administration and the board to implement new procedures to secure the safety of our students. Regarding the middle school, the eighth grade students recently completed their history fair projects. 22 students advanced to the regional history fair at SIUC and from there we had six students who will represent the middle school at the state fair on May 4. Those are Carly Pulis, Annie Decker, Shelby Cook, Eldor, Cody's, Ellie, Ellie, Door, Cody Stoliver, Jacob Lopez. And also, Mr. Moore took 17 students to Washington DC for three days over spring break, April 3 through the 5. They got to visit places like Arlington Cemetery, George Washington's home at Mount Vernon and the Lincoln Memorial. And finally, at Carruthers, Michelle Asa and Matt Todd were awarded a grant for an observation hive that will be placed in the cafeteria. They are partnering with Angie Cool from the Health Department to provide the educational opportunities with the hive. The third grade teachers are building a pollinator garden bed and will be getting 20 free plants from the U of I extension. The beds are built and the seedlings planted and a compost bin has also been built.
This is from Mr. Hubert. Congratulations to Mr. Todd and his class for creating the theme for this year's Apple Festival. Chairman Sean Sterns, Captain Applesauce and Queen Shelby McCowan recognized the class yesterday at an all-school assembly. The Running Club held its second annual 5K run on April 15.
I would like to add that last weekend, the band, Jan and the concert band, got first in superior ratings and made it to Toronto and back safely. And the, the, the Annie junior production was outstanding. So it was a good weekend for the fine arts in Murphysboro as well.
Moving on, number nine is Freedom of Information Act request.
We have four. We had one from Shriver Center. They were asking whether or not we had a school resource officer. We responded that we don't. We got two from the MEA bargaining team, asking things such as contracts over 25,000, overtime payroll information, administrative salaries and contracts, looking into some of our board packets, annual payroll for Schedule B, total costs for employees' names and how many years of experience they have for that. And then our final one was from the IEA-NEA. We're requesting to know how many teachers do we have that are on fair share? As you might or might not be aware, the Supreme Court's going to come down with a ruling on fair share. And so they were seeing how many we have. I believe we have around. So, we responded to all of those in a timely fashion.
Number 10, recognition of the audience. The Board of Education welcomes the audience to make public and employee comments. The Board has set aside time in the agenda specifically for this purpose. Pursuant to Board Policy 2.230, each speaker shall be limited to a five-minute presentation. Please be aware that while this is the time for the public to express its opinions and/or concerns, the Board may or may not comment regarding public presentations. If a matter of public comment warrants discussion or action of the Board of Education, such discussion or action will be added to the agenda of a future meeting. Are there any public concerns? Any employee concerns?
I'll keep it brief. It's not, it's not a huge deal, but... Oh, sorry, Melinda Pearson. I'm the vice president of the MEA. I know that discussions are starting about how to determine how to utilize the money from the new funding formula and I know Mr. Grody tonight is going to outline a facility plan and building staff needs. And as he's explained to MEA, he seems to want to focus on staffing, which we are wholeheartedly in support of. He's outlined for us what the funding formula says we need versus what we have and, you know, started to think of some ideas about how to get to where we need to be, which again, we are wholeheartedly in support of. But I also understand that at least at the elementary levels, that the funding needs don't fit in with what we can physically house in a building, which is understandable. And I also know that y'all may be looking at long-term plans for making, you know, giving us those kinds of accommodations. I only wanted to urge that, to ensure to not postpone the staffing needs that our kids need based only, don't just write off that, oh, we don't have the room, we'll have to wait until those buildings are built until those kinds of staffing needs are met. Because, you know, what, if we're looking at new campuses or new, new buildings on new campuses, we could easily be looking at a decade before we have the capacity, the physical capacity to, to meet those staffing needs. And I would just urge the Board to at least take an opportunity, not necessarily for next year, but as this is being thought of, to think creatively about how we can best utilize the existing space, an existing space in our district, what other districts have done when they face this problem so that our K through 5 is not just kind of stuck in this holding pattern of waiting for a building before we can get our class sizes down. We are wholeheartedly excited about the opportunity to potentially have some additional staff and to start staffing up our buildings in a way that can best serve our students and, and, and help our teachers as well. But I just, especially where there are building concerns, I just urge the staff to, to not write off the, not write off the idea of staffing just while we're waiting for new space.
Thank you. Any other employee concerns? Moving on, number one under old business is a district financial update.
Mr. Financial update, it's April. It seems like every month I keep saying we're waiting for April, we're waiting for April. We got 100 and...
144,000.
144,000 additional dollars added to our general state aid in our first payment in April. That is excellent news.
We will get that same additional amount over the next five payments. So the, the total amount of new money, assuming we get all of those evidence-based funding payments, will be 864,014.
And are we going to get those all in this fiscal year?
Yes.
We should get those two in April, two in May, two in June.
The discussion is really that they do plan on giving us all the words that we'll get it this year. They are also though discussing about how they would possibly do prorations in the future if they need to. The way that this works is you've got four tiers of funding. We are tier one, so we are, are, are the last to be dealt with. Tier one gets the most amount of money, tier two gets a little bit less, tier three, tier four almost gets nothing. They pretty much are adequately funded. So when they do prorations, they take away from tier four first, right? But there's very little money there. Then they take away from tier three, they take away from tier two and then they come after tier one. And so with proration, you know, they would, they would come through, but if, if they have to prorate, you know, millions and millions of dollars, then it doesn't take long to get to, to, to us. So really the question is, is we do plan on getting the money this year. We hope that we're going to get the money next year. There are currently just a lot of articles that will argue with our, whatever side of the political party you're on, who's talking about not having a full budget for next year and who is talking about having a full budget for next year. I would like to think that they're going to give us a full budget for next year by the governor's election in November, so...
The premise of the evidence-based model is that the new funding they just got, gave us combined with what we've been receiving all year is our new minimum base. So next year it's 10 million and some change, so next year that's our minimum and then they're supposed to pump in new money.
And if they pump their new money, it comes mostly to us.
Right.
And other people.
But that's the idea. But what, what concerns me the most is that they already start talking about the, how the proration happens. So I'm thinking, oh, you know, they're already, they're already making that plan. But I think we will get all of those, those payments. Comptroller's already been given those payment orders, so I, I do really believe that that additional 864,000 will come to us through the end of June. Beyond that, no idea.
Have you heard anything else about shifting of other costs?
Pension cost shifting.
Really going to depend on the, I think the governor's race. The rounder has said that he would like to see the cost shift. I do not believe that Pritzker is looking at the cost shift. For us, the cost shift would be huge, huge.
Lose money.
What's that?
Said we'd lose money.
It would definitely be a...
Do you have any figures on that?
What's that?
Do you have any figures on that or no? I think a preliminary figure was, they were talking about doing it, you know, 25% at a time and it could be upwards towards $3 million in additional costs when they get to that full, that full amount.
I think what you were asking though was more for like, for us, what would our, what would be the effect of us on, if we did the cost shift, and we can get those numbers worked up for you. But right now we've got, the good news is, and stay focused on the good news is, we do have money to do some things with. And it's really going to become that uncomfortable place of, of moving forward while still understanding we've got to go year to year. Questions, concerns or comments on the financial update?
Okay, number two, high school auditorium update.
The auditorium's in the dry now. They've got their decking up, so there is a roof. They're still working on the roof, it's just the decking. And the, going out there to... And the, uh, going out there today, they're working on the concrete on the inside for all of the brick walls. So they're moving right along. As you walk around it, you can really see the, the building taking form. The office area's got its wall kicking out of it. The bathroom's getting its wall kicking out of it. And, uh, the classrooms in the back are there. The garage door is, is open. It's extremely tall. But it's exciting to, to see what's happening with the, the auditorium. Has anybody gone by and seen it, or?
Yes, bro.
Just on the outside.
Yeah.
Questions, concerns, comments on that one? They're moving forward with the request for proposals on the sound equipment. We'll have that next month.
Uh, number three is building staff needs.
Building staff needs. What you have in your pile, sheet of paper that looks like this. Building list.
Building list?
Yeah, building list, no particular order. This is for your reading pleasure. Every building came up with a building list or things that they would like to see added. This was a brainstorming list, and we need more teachers. We also need more aides. We need more speech-language pathologists. We need a lot of more things. We've been cut pretty drastically over the, the past few years due to the proration and everything. If you can go to the sheet of paper that says regular ed, I'm gonna explain this one to you. It's a graph with a bunch of numbers. What we did there, I can see everybody's reading their, the, the building needs list. What we've done with this one is we've added how many students are in kindergarten, right? We have seven teachers currently. A hundred and thirty, what they want is the, um, the number of teachers needed with ESSA, that column, is a hundred and thirty-five divided by fifteen. We would need nine teachers to get what our evidence-based model wants us to get at. We've got seven teachers, so we would need two additional teachers. As Ms. Pearson pointed out, the problem at Corr- at, at the General really is, there's no room, okay? They're missing two teachers at every grade level, all right? If you go to third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade, right now, there's seven teachers in third grade. They need, for ESSA, seven teachers. Keeping them at that seven teacher slot would be actually getting them to the class size of twenty, which is what ESSA recommends. Third through high school, we wanna keep the class sizes at around twenty. Fourth grade with six teachers, with a hundred and seventy-one students, we would need eight point five five teachers.
But didn't we approve at the last meeting to hire a third grade or fourth grade teacher?
A fifth grade.
Oh, fifth grade, right.
Fifth grade. We went from, we've got six fifth grade teachers, and we need seven, and, well, seven and a half, so we agreed to add one there, okay? So, um, that's six teachers though, that I have there of number of teachers, is with that new fifth grade t- class. So don't think that we're going up to seven with that additional one. There are currently five fifth grade teachers, and I've added that one that you've allowed us to, even though we haven't hired them yet. We've added them into that list, sorry. All right. Um, and then sixth, seventh, and eighth grade is the same thing. There's five teachers in sixth grade. To get to, given the hundred and sixty students that they'll have next year, they need to get to eight. There's five teachers in seventh grade. They need seven and a half. Five teachers in eighth grade, seven and a half. So when I'm looking at this, I see that a lot of our classes are two teachers behind, okay? There's another document, uh, Melinda asked me, where did a lot of these numbers come from? Where did those target scores come from? And there's this spreadsheet that, that Jan and I have, and if you go into the cell, you can see where it's calculated at. On the larger spreadsheet, it'll tell you that in K three for a district with our numbers, kindergarten through third grade, they'd like to see us that we need nine more teachers. Fourth through eighth grade, we need thirteen point two teachers. High school, we need six point eight teachers, seven teachers, all right? So our biggest need according to the gap analysis really is fourth through eighth grade. And when you look at this, it's, it's, it's interesting because kindergarten through second grade is in fact two teachers behind. What I've proposed here is if we add a fourth grade teacher, because we're, we're, we could get that up to seven, we would be one teacher behind in fourth grade. The goal here is to, where we can, we'd like to see us to get to one teacher behind. At Corruthers, we could add that fourth grade teacher. We would have to build another wall to, to add another classroom, which we've talked about, and we know where we'd do that, or how we'd do that. There's a couple of possibilities. But that would get Corruthers to be pretty much one teacher behind at their grade levels. At the middle school, if we add three new teachers, that would be, that would get us to be one, roughly one student, one teacher behind, okay? So if you look at that as the, the, the main goal, you know, as we start bringing back programs, I, I, I talked to, to the M E A about, have you ever seen that thing where there's the jar, you wanna bring in the big rocks, and then the gravel, and then the pebbles and the sand, and you got room for the cup of coffee? You gotta put the big rocks in first. I think our regular ed is our big rocks. At Corruthers, I mean at the General, where we're gonna be two teachers behind in every grade level, we need to look at...
Kind of, you just, what is the difference between this one and this one?
Oh, okay. The one on the bottom.
Okay.
What I did there was, instead of posting for, you'll see that there's four new teachers on the top sheet of paper. On the bottom sheet of paper, there's three new teachers added, okay? What I did there was I, I, I looked at the third grade teacher, and I went from seven sections of third grade to six sections of third grade, which puts us one section behind, one teacher behind. Right now, if you look, third grade is spot on. They have as many teachers as they should have.
So why would we wanna reduce that?
Because if we're looking at all of our options, we wouldn't wanna reduce that. But we could move that person into seventh grade, and then we would still be one teacher behind at every grade level.
Seems like it'd be a better
And it would be...
balanced student to teacher ratio if you shift that to the fourth. Is that what you were...
Well, no. It's just that that's an option that we could do to stay with that whole one teacher behind. Third grade would be the only teacher next year that would actually be adequately staffed. I don't have an issue with that. But when we start looking at, you know, the amount of money for four teachers versus three teachers, and you start looking at that, that's just an option of something that we could do.
Right, but if, I mean, we'd have seven classrooms in kindergarten first, second, and third, and fourth.
If we add another teacher.
Well, if we don't reduce the third grade and add the, to the, to the fifth, or to the fourth grade.
Yes.
And, I mean, to me, that seems like that was the whole point of adding the second grade teacher this year was to keep the...
No, I completely understand. And I would argue that the students at the third grade are getting, because the teachers in kindergarten first and second are two teachers behind with class sizes, it's hard to keep up with all of the needs of that, that population. And so those third grade teachers, if I can keep them at twenty where they should be, I like that idea.
What, I guess...
I'm just showing you your options.
When you look at getting, and obviously none of it's good, but you pick the lesser of the two evils. With Corruthers getting one teacher behind, but then still being two teachers behind, you know, K through two, wouldn't, which, which grade level, between those two schools, which one has the biggest impact on, you know, having fifteen versus having twenty students in a class? I mean, if you had to choose a, you know, one of the schools is going to have a class size of twenty, and one's gonna have a class size of fifteen, which one has the bigger impact? Did you get the point to work there?
I would always say that the, the, I don't wanna, every grade level has a very important impact, but with the younger kids, that's where we've put the focus at before. That's why, one of the reasons why we moved K two out to the General, because we knew that, that staffing, the larger number at Corruthers, that building's just not, not, not adequately designed to staff it as well as you can the General. Doesn't have the number of classrooms.
Okay, so which one would have the bigger impact of being a fifteen-person class or a twenty-person class? Yes, so if you have twenty in a class, K through two, when they get to third grade, it goes to fifteen, does that allow them to excel? Do they then have to catch up?
When they go to third, they can go down to twenty in a class.
It would go, what I'm saying is, if you had a class, if you could have a class, and you were supposed to be fifteen in a class, correct?
K two.
K two.
K two's would be fifteen in a class, but we're at twenty to twenty-two.
Yes.
And then you're supposed to have how many in a class, third, fourth, fifth?
Twenty.
Okay, so if you, one of those, you know, they're, they're putting these numbers out there. If getting the K through two class size down from where it is now, are you saying we're fine where we are now?
No, but we don't have any more rooms. So if I could move a magic wand and get, and, and, and add on two rooms to every, every one of those hallways, that would be, that would be ideal. And that's where Melinda was talking about. We wanna look at portables. We wanna look at, um, portables, uh, you brought up McIlvane, but we've got over two hundred students out here at McIlvane that we'd have to...
Talked about, um, these are just, I don't have the answers to it, but I mean...
Co-teaching, where you said maybe you had a class of thirty-five.
We should at least look into, you know, could we co-teach, where you pair two teachers up into a classroom and make that class size bigger? So, you might have thirty-five in a class, but you have this two teacher-student ratio might be lower.
My next faculty forum at the General will...
I honestly don't know what the research says is the best answer. I'm not saying, I'm not advocating for any one thing. I just, you know, there, there are options. This is not the first time this prob- problem has ever been addressed, so there have to be some answers somewhere.
Here at McIlvane, the preschool, it's half-day, right?
Uh, yeah, AM and noon.
But do they go all, all five days half-day?
Yes.
And when is that, um, ramp up?
Two, two more years with S I U?
Pre, the head start, I think two more years with the head start. They've got a lease for two more years out here. And then there's the S I U pre-K, which basically every district has agreed, we've had that, that for years. We always have to have room for the S I U pre-K. And then, um, there's tri-county, and so if we move the tri-county rooms out of here, we'll have to pay for transportation, 'cause those rooms will have to go somewhere, to another district. So really, the head start's the only one that we can move out, and that's what, three classrooms, four classrooms?
Three classrooms.
Really, the only thing you can do is put kindergarten here, and that's just gonna be...
And then what do you do with the other classrooms that are here? It's, uh, so, I mean, the next, uh, faculty forum I have at the General, we're gonna be discussing this thing, 'cause really what we need to do at the General is do more gravel, because we don't have the room for the big te- for the big, the big rocks, the classrooms. And we need to move forward on that facility projects, so that we can, uh, get a better understanding and try and get the, uh, the buildings built.
Well, we talked about this once, and it's been a while ago, but, um, somewhere, and I don't even know why, but we brought up portable buildings, but then there was such a cost with the, um, all the utilities, basically, that went to it.
Portables now need to be, you need to make sure that they're ADA and they need to have potable water. So every one of the portables have to have their own bathrooms now. And so there is a huge cost to, it used to be you could bring in your portables, and then they'd come into the building to eat, they'd come into the building to go to the bathroom. And so they used to be a really cheap option, and they're just not as cheap anymore. The regulations have, have gotten to the point where bringing a portable on is...
How much is one?
I'd have to do the research. They, they're...
Yeah, that was years ago.
It's, uh, it's the, getting the plumbing installed and everything that really adds to the cost.
Are there other buildings in town to rent?
That would be something we could look at. Um, the problem with that is, is that whenever you start a school, like, when you, when you empty a building and you, and, and students are out of the building for a time, then you, when you bring them back in, sometimes you have to go back up to the new building codes. There are some, some rules and regulations that are problematic, so like the Murfreesboro Christian Academy. Could that building be used? We'd have to work with the R O E and figure that out. And those are options that we can think about. Right now, what we're looking at is, for next year, where do we wanna put that money? And, and I think it's gonna first be, need to be into regular ed, but I think we're also gonna be, in the months to come, looking at some supplemental stuff at the General, because they are two teachers behind, when we really would like them more one teacher behind.
On the Murfreesboro Middle School, it says, you know, the three teachers, is that per grade or...
Then, no, that'd be one per grade.
So, okay, and that would get them back to the schedule that they...
Now, we'd put them back to the extended math and the st- extended language arts.
Do they have room there?
Uh, yes.
They have rooms to move in.
They have three?
Yeah, 'cause they had it before. They had it before. They might lose a teacher's lounge or a teacher workroom or a thing, and I'm, I'm pretty...
We're cool with that.
You're cool with that.
We really don't need that.
I didn't ask that question because I figured they were cool with that. All right, um, so that kinda gets into this. And when you start looking at then the next page, which are the, the, not the big rocks, but the gravel, the number of students in the building, it then gives you a calculation on how many monitors. So like, right now, we've got one monitor at the General, one at Corruthers, and one at, uh, two at the middle school. At the General, it, it calls for two monitors. At Corruthers, it calls for two monitors. When you look at special ed instructional assistance, the numbers that we have there are actually listed as our special ed numbers. Nowhere on this papers that I'm giving you...
Sorry, go ahead.
Just so we're clear, nowhere on, on, on either of these papers that I'm giving you have counted currently our reading aides, okay? So the aides that are listed here are special ed aides. Our reading aides are not factored into these, so we do have other people there that, that kind of help with that interventionist teacher. But what this comes down to, and for social worker, there's no number staff needed for E S S A, and that's really because, um, right, wrong, or indifferent. I think the, the, the state and the Federals look at social workers and guidance counselors as the same thing. Guidance counselors are currently being trained to be able to do, uh, counseling services. I think that's a mistake. I think guidance counselors, I think there's a place in our organization for people that do schedules, they do scheduling, they do, uh, career counseling, which is different than what our social workers do. But right now, so when you look at, um, the number of, uh, like at the General, it says we should have one guidance counselor. We do have one student advocate, which is a non-certified person, and we do have one social worker. So for, I guess, counting purposes, they would say that there's two at that building. I would argue that those two things are separate, and there is just no guidance on what, how many social workers you would have at these grade levels. Um, I think that if you ask the teachers, they would all say that at least one at every building is appropriate, I would imagine.
I, I would only add that, I know there's a bill going through the General, it's probably right now, I have no idea about the passage, but it's saying that there needs to be one social worker for every two hundred and fifty students.
Okay.
Which would obviously increase our needs. I, I can't imagine, I can't imagine that that would pass, but it is...
I know right now they're trying to take all the grants for S R Os, school resource officers, and move those into social workers as well. The research would say that, uh, social work and preventative stuff is better than having an, uh, unarmed person in the building. And again, it goes back and forth with that. Anyway, that's what this document is regarding the, the, the facts and figures and the numbers. I, I would say that there is a good argument to be made for, you know, four to five new teachers easily for next year. There'd be a great argument to be made for more than that if we had room for them at the General. I did. I said four to five. For those of you that heard somebody say, "What did he say?" But we will be discussing that more later. Is there any questions regarding the building staff needs? And go through this list. The M E A does have this list. This has been, basically what this list is, is it was compiled by the administrators at the buildings after, after going through various processes with their staff. It then was sent to me. I then organized it. So it's had maybe two iterations through translation. The M E A is going to be sharing this with the buildings, right, Melinda?
Uh, yes.
Yes, to make sure that we are, we haven't lost anything or are misinterpreting anything during all of those little iterations and reorganizations.
I'm, sorry.
Anything else from the Board?
Through the, the district facility plan, I guess Jim's not, didn't make it.
No, he was called away, but that's fine. This is for your reading pleasure too. And we will have, before the next Board meeting, Mr. Beavers, Mr. Rungy, Jan, uh, Jim Seifer and I will meet and, and, and organize a bunch of information for you to have at the next thing. The long and short of this, it breaks it down for every building, but the long and short of it is, roughly, what was the total dollar amount? Building on at the General John A. Logan site... Building on at the General John A. Logan site to create a, adding three to five there.
Adding three to five grades, three to five?
Third, third to fifth.
Okay.
Grades. So basically, if you look at, there's a map in here, and if you look at, you put your thumb on where the general building is, there is space behind the general for another building of similar size. Uh, building on at, at the General John A. Logan, a third to fifth grade building, would make some sense. Demolishing Carruthers and building a brand-new middle school there would make some sense. The, 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 middle school is an old building. It is, um, organized nicely with three levels, I think it needs to be repurposed, um, but it is an old building and it has unique purposes. Carruthers, the way it's laid out, you just really can't organize any pockets or grade levels or anything really for that. So what this comes down to is, and on this, there's a page on the back, I wrote some notes online, but it looks like this, where we'll give you projected costs. And so for building a new middle school, they're looking at thirteen million dollars for a new middle school. Now, my response to Mr. Sefer was, that's it? We just did eight million on the auditorium. And, 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 but he pointed out, well, the auditorium's full of very expensive equipment, the sound stuff, I mean, that included the sound costs, the, um, the big spaces, the lights, those seats, I mean, you fill up that space with a lot of expensive equipment. He also pointed out that that eight million is getting you a new office, and you're tying into a building. And he showed me here that we're, we're, we're building onto the general. Whenever you tie into a building, it costs more than just building standalone. Now, the, the, building the new three to five building, a new, um, Carruthers building, it would need to tie into the general, kind of off of a fifth grade wing, and you would, we would design it so that it'd be a separate building, but it would be attached to the general. And then the, the, um, the middle school would be a brand-new one. So he says, and now the middle school would also probably not have an auditorium. But its location at Carruthers, the facilities could be shared, the, the trap, and everything, I mean, there'd be walking distance between the baseball fields and the, the Carruthers school. These are a lot of details we need to work out, next month, we will talk more about those details. But really, that kind of, in a very big-picture sense, I know there's a lot of details that need to be worked out, but in a very big-picture sense, this study pretty much showed that building three to five at the general, and, uh.
Does that thirteen million, that doesn't include though, the demolition of Carruthers? So where's that?
Uh, it's down here, demolition of Carruthers School, three hundred and eighty thousand.
Just quickly, you and I had a conversation a while back, who, what was the school that was built here in the last year you and I were talking about? Blueford? How big?
For that, uh, how many square feet it was, I'd have to go back and look at it, but it was. Gymnasium was picking up a regional tournament play.
But it was a school and a gymnasium?
It had four chucks in it, had classes in it.
It was under five million?
Yeah, I think it was thirty-five thou-
Three point five.
Thirty-five thousand square foot building.
Where's Blueford at?
It's east of Melbourne.
East of Melbourne, because the, one of the things that, that, um, Jim did point out with this, on one of the, on, on a few of the pages, where it talks about the costs of things, uh, it says, uh, the, the address is, um, Carbondale. And he made me feel better, cause he said if this was a Marion project, the address would be Carbondale, they have to put in a regional place. He said if I could make this address Paducah, because of prevailing wage, or you can pick a different city, you get, um, you can get a lot of savings based on.
Yeah, but Mount Vernon's gonna have prevailing wage too. Well, it's still prevailing wage, it, it just depends on what, if you're going to, um, Metro East, he said, um, it might double the cost of a project. So it's just regionally where it is, and, and, uh, Paducah has to be Kentucky in there.
Yeah, but I mean, Mount, east of Mount Vernon, it shouldn't be much different than Murphysboro.
Actually, I kinda like the idea though, this Blueford, it's, it's in Illinois, it's out west, and, and what grades was it?
It's east high school, it was a high school.
It was a high school?
It was east, east of Mount Vernon.
Five million. I, I, I mean, I'm looking at a middle school at thirteen million, so if we can get it at five.
That, that's why I guess that's.
I'm not gonna look at Blueford, when we talk to Jim, see what they got.
I wrote it down, Blueford.
But this one is sixty thousand square feet, the middle school.
Yeah, how much was Blueford?
He said thirty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand?
Thirty-five.
Twenty-five thousand, so it was about half the size.
Do we know what their high school enrollment is? I have no idea.
I don't know.
This one's, this, that was in addition to an existing building.
Oh.
Anyway, that's, uh, there's a lot more details that need to get into, this is just shared, please, if you have questions, concerns, comments regarding this reading that you got, email me.
Is there a timeline on here? Like, what is your, what, when would you like to do this?
Yeah, um, the first thing is, is we gotta work out the details, and then figure out the timeline from there, so I, I.
Are you, but are you thinking in the next year or two, or are you thinking in the next five years, ten years?
I, I'm thinking in the next year or two, I think we really need to start moving on this. I think that what we need to do is, uh, talk to the city and the county about the middle school, and what it can be repurposed as. Um, I think there's a lot of, uh, advantageous things that, that, you know, I see that Murphysboro can really use that space, we could help out our park district, we could, you know, if we leverage, and we come up with a grand city plan, it would help us in, uh, our, our ability to move forward and, and get the financing done for this.
Was this replacement for Carruthers, that wasn't adding it on to the general, that was a complete replacement, is that?
No, it would be added on to the thing, it would still be attached, but it'd just be attached to that one hallway.
Okay. And there'd be another gym there.
So really, what we wanna do is, we wanna get kind of a big-picture idea, because if this is the direction we wanna go, the, um, General John A. Logan needs new cooling towers. Right now, that cooling tower is an expensive way per student for electrical costs. If we could add geothermal at the general, we need to know if we're going to be adding the number of students for third to fifth grade, because what we would wanna do is, when we do that project, build it, so that we could supply both of those buildings with the geothermal.
So, question for you, so on the, on the general, why are we saying four classrooms, eighteen students on here? And we're talking about third, fourth, fifth?
Which one are you?
No, it's on down there, it's on, the next one says the replacement.
It's not adding classrooms to the K, K-two building in addition to building three, five.
Right.
Four classrooms, eighteen students per, oh, gotcha. Yeah, they're, they're, they're picking eighteen because fifteen's our target, and, and.
I know, but I guess, oh, I'm saying, so is that four classrooms, just to get K through two to where we need to be, that's not counting adding third, fourth, and fifth at the general?
Right, that's, that's correct. That would just be the add-on of those classrooms.
If fifteen's our target, oh, God, sorry.
So there's not a price for putting third, fourth, and fifth out there?
There is, if you look at the construction, a replacement for Carruthers Gymnasium, Storm Shelter, and Kitchen Food Service Area, five forty-five, that, that, that nine million fifty-one thousand would be the, the Carruthers cost. Just underneath the general addition.
Okay, so, construct replacement for Carruthers. Out by the.
Yeah. So what you've got here is, the first cost is the new middle school, the second one would be to add on to Carru-, uh, to the general, those classrooms. The third one would be to move the Carruther, not move, but build the Carruthers behind the general. The fourth one is the cost to demolish, to raise Carruthers, and the, the, the last one was that geothermal idea of how much it would cost to add geothermal that would handle both buildings.
If our goal's fifteen students in a classroom, why are we building for eighteen students in a classroom?
Honestly, um, I would hope that that classroom would be the same size as the classrooms that currently can handle, can handle twenty-some. We don't wanna, so I don't, I think that was just, um, a rough estimate of what size the, the classrooms are, not wanting to build these.
If we're trying to have nine classrooms, or whatever it is for kindergarten, why aren't we doing, while we're building, why aren't we doing that?
I don't understand.
We add on enough, I think the other will be bigger, and we'll have fifteen in it.
Yeah, so that, that, that student size is to do square footage?
Yeah, I think.
I see what you're saying, so you're saying essentially, if we take the total attendance at general, divided by fifteen, do we have enough classrooms?
Right.
Is what she's saying.
Right.
Does the four give us fifteen per classroom, if that's where we need to be? That's what she's saying. So I understand, he's doing, when he, when he does this, he does it by eighteen students per classroom.
No, I think that's just a, a number that he put into this document, so that he knew kind of the size of those classrooms.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying, what she's saying is, four classrooms added on the general, does that give us enough to go fifteen students per classroom? That's what she's saying.
No, we would need two more.
So then, wouldn't we wanna?
Six classrooms instead of four?
I think because when you build Carruthers, you're building off of the fifth grade, and so you would add those, those, those extra two classrooms that, that would be needed for fifth grade, would be added into the replacement cost for Carruthers, cause you're tying in at that one. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Cause there's the, there's the kindergarten wing, and there's the first grade wing, and what the building that they're looking at would be Carruthers would be off of the fif-, off of the, I can't, the fifth grade wing, the, the, the second, the second grade wing. And so the two classrooms here, two classrooms here, and then when we build the other building, they would add those two classrooms then.
Okay.
Excellent questions? As you read through this and think about it, email me.
We may not have the money to staff it fifteen for a long time, you know, however the state.
Right, I'm just saying, if a building, I mean, building, I could that, think it up.
If we would've done, had these numbers when general was built originally, the cost of put two, four rooms on then, and we would have this, you were in now.
Hindsight is twenty-twenty, and, and we were talking this morning, whoever decided to make Carruthers a completely electric building, right, is that?
General.
A general, a completely electric building is, is frustrating. I'm, I, I will tell you that I am kicking myself for not fighting for those four classrooms at the high school more, cause you'll see in the needs. Right. Christie's kicking me too. Yeah, the, um, cause quite honestly, when you look at the high school, and the number of, of staff that they could use, it would've been nice to add those four rooms, cause we could've, we still wouldn't have been able to, we'd be full at the high school too, so it's, uh, but yeah, the, the hindsight's always. Anything else on the facility plans? But Mr. Beavers and Mr. Rungy and I will be getting with Ms. Bush and, uh, Mr. Sefer to have a meeting before our next month, so. There's a lot of details that need to be.
Number five, financing of lease purchase agreement.
Yes, um, this was agenda item last month, uh, the board approved, uh, a lease purchase for computer equipment, a fifty thousand dollar lease purchase. I did reach out locally to area banks to try to find the lowest interest rate to finance, um, the lease purchase, and the lowest rate was, um, three point nine six percent monthly, to repay that fifty thousand over five years, with that funding source being the, the lease purchase levy through our property taxes. So, the administration's recommendation would be to, um, enter into a financing agreement with First Southern Bank, um, for fifty thousand dollars at three point nine six percent.
Any questions?
And this is the one that we have the cash, but we're just gonna still take a loan for it, right?
The, well, I mean, we have additional revenue source, but this is, uh, through the lease purchase, this is money that we levy each year for the primary source, just for lease purchase, that's the only thing that that can be used for, is that nickel levy.
We, if we didn't do this, that, that money, would it just accumulate?
But it can only be spent on, in the future, as it accumulates, it's, it can only be spent on leases.
Right, and, and trying to, to.
Agreed, I guess what I'm saying is, so like, right now, what, do you have an idea of what's in that fund?
No, I, not off the top of my head.
That's what I'm saying is.
Just because it's, what's in there now, what's in there now, and what is, will be, continue to be levy, is, we have two, two or three lease purchases from the prior year, so those, the money that goes in there is paying those, uh, lease purchases. You know, we sat down and looked at district technology plan, what can we do through this lease purchase to upgrade our technology? And so that's what we've been doing over the past probably five or six years, using that lease purchase to upgrade our computers in our, in our classrooms every year.
What I'm saying is, so if, let's say, get fifty thousand dollars built up in that fund for the lease purchase fund, you lease the fifty thousand, pay it off, I don't know if you can early pay off, pay it off in two months, then instead of paying fifty-two hundred dollars in interest, you pay three hundred dollars in interest. So you save yourself five grand, but the money's still used the same way it was used.
Question is, are we paying it off early, if the money's in there?
If it's available, can you use it to pay it off early, so you don't have to pay interest?
You probably could, um, but I'm not sure we would have enough accumulated with our current, with the leases we currently have, the money that's coming in. It just gives us enough to, for another ten, twelve thousand dollars additional to put into a lease. So I mean, we wouldn't really have enough to do this right now, fifty thousand, and, and pay it off early, wouldn't have the funds at this time.
In that fund?
Right.
But if we used a different fund, we'd have, do we have fifty thousand dollars? In the tech, like, technology, to purchase technology?
Not that it's not already, I mean, not budgeted, that we're not spending on something else currently.
So make sure we're not, we're putting on a credit card when we could pay it off, check.
And we may, we may wanna look at, um, doing things differently moving forward, now that, but I mean, we've, we've got, um, eight hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars in new money, but we've also talking about hiring additional staff, and, um, don't wanna take on too much, and we have, you know, this funding source just for this year's worth of computers. We may be looking, next year, do something completely different for our technology plan.
Could sales tax money be used for that?
No.
Not since it isn't a, um.
Not for computers, yeah.
That's an ongoing.
Anchor to the ground.
Or if we screw up to the wall. Any more questions? entertain motion to approve the financing of lease purchase agreement.
Make motion.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carry. The new business, number one, an intergovernmental, governmental agreement for SOAR alternative education program.
SOAR is the alternative education program out of the Regional Office of Education. We typically will send one to two, I think, maybe up to three, to this each year, um, this is a yearly renewal. The recommendation is to allow us to continue with the SOAR alternate education program.
Have a recommendation from the administration, do I have a motion to approve the recommendation?
Some.
In a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carry. Number two, an intergovernmental agreement for COPE State Schools Program.
And this is another program with the Regional Office of Education that we, um, we do have to send students to, unfortunately, this would be what, when we do a stay of expulsion, if we have a student that we're ready to be expelled, we can send them to COPE, and, um, they can continue their education that way, in lieu of being kicked out.
Good.
So the, um, recommendation is that we approve our next year's COPE program.
Have a recommendation from the administration, do I have a motion to approve?
Some.
In a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carry. Number three, agreement for athletic training services.
You have the document in front of you, um, we were given an original proposal from Athletico, and, um, we have.
What did we pay for last year?
I'm assuming thirty-five thousand.
Twenty-seven-nine, but it didn't, it didn't include the fall season.
So my question then would be, so we put that out for bid for one year, we asked for one-year bid from these companies, did we ask for three-year options for any of these companies? Like, I don't, that's my concern, if we say we're, we're gonna go ahead and sign a contract with them for three years, but we didn't bid it out for a three-year contract with anybody else, then we really didn't bid it out.
No, we didn't bid it out.
We only got one response, we did bid it out.
The last year.
We bid it out for one year, that's what I'm saying, like, as, as a company, or anybody else you might be able to do it, and say, hey, we originally had somebody who was doing this, we no longer have, would you like to come in, and if you're a company, you may say, this may just be a one-year deal, I'm not interested, but you come back and say, hey, this'd be a three-year gig, they may say, yeah, we might as well live it up. So I guess my, I, I just wouldn't wanna approve this and then not put it out for bid, cause we really haven't put this out for bid. We put out last year for bid, we haven't put a three-year.
Three-year.
Exactly.
Yeah, my, my understanding was that the really, I mean, the other companies have a different model, and they were, they were. Yeah, my, my understanding was that they really, I mean, the other companies have a different model, and they were, they were struggling on even trying to figure out how to bid, uh, the project, so, I mean.
Right, cuz it was for one year.
No, it was just because they didn't understa- they didn't, they couldn't bid, so like, like, um, the one that works through SIH, they were trying to figure out how they would even come up with a, a a structure for it, so I, I guess, I mean, we can go back and we can, we can send out information and contact all the companies again. But when we did that, the last time we went out to bid for this, we only got one response.
So who does, I mean, who does all the area schools?
I don't, who's, who's, who's the main athletic training services for that? Is Sportsology, would you say is the?
I mean, doesn't, doesn't Orthopedic Institute have?
Doesn't what?
Doesn't Orthopedic Institute do some schools?
SI, SI.
Or is this a?
They used to do us, didn't they?
They got, they got real high though, right? That's why we didn't.
Correct, yeah, for one year.
Yeah, we used on multi-year.
Was multi-year.
That kept going up every year, they were.
I don't think we put out a three-year bid though, a plan, a three-year plan.
Regulations is, if it's over twenty-five thousand, we have to put it out for bid, and we haven't done that, correct?
It's not.
This is a service.
This is, yeah, but services are, are different, um, contracts for services as this, don't fall under the bid, the bid threshold for professional services.
But it doesn't mean we can't, it just means we don't have to.
Wouldn't it be worth it to see if there's something else out there?
My question would be, if Athletico comes back, they gave us this, cuz they were higher, and we talked them lower, right?
Yes.
So then if we go out and say, well, we're gonna put it out for bid, and they come bid, and they find out the marketplace is higher, we're gonna cost more than this.
The marketplace is higher, well, they bid low, not, knowing that they're going.
Kinda like the bustings, when they put it out for bid, it ended up costing them more money.
My recommendation would be to, to go with this contract as presented. It is a service, so we don't have to go through the bidding requirements. Um, we did knock down their price as much as we could. The last time we did go out to bid, we only, they were the only ones that seemed to un, to, to be able to give us a written response. The other SIOC was way high, and that's why we moved away from them. So I, I, I think that if we went out to bid, Athletico would be the only one that would come back with us again.
I have a couple of questions, and I, for Mr. Navara and Coach, are you happy with our services? I know it's just been one year with them, or two, how many, what?
One year.
Just this year.
Ten months.
And are you happy with what they've?
They've done wonderful job.
Okay.
I didn't, we didn't have it as, the Fall did not have an athletic trainer.
She didn't come to all the years?
So I have no idea.
Yeah, we didn't have them in the Fall.
Yeah, we didn't get a contract done until winter, basketball was when it started.
And that's why the, the initial years more.
Here's the other thing, in this writing that's in here, it says they're gonna add the summer camp at no additional cost, uh, so meaning they're not gonna charge us more for the completion of this year, because then it's going up for eighteen, nineteen. So is that what you mean, they're not gonna add on fees for what we've already paid for this year?
Our year starts July first.
Right, but she's saying. It's written, no, they're gonna add summer camp at no additional cost, but yet the price for next year is going up, so I didn't know if that meant, they're just basically not gonna charge us to be here for this summer camp?
I think they typically would do summer camps, is what they're saying, it wouldn't be included in that.
In their specs.
The price is going up because they didn't include the fall season, right?
But then why?
It goes up every year. Well, then it also says on this one, any additional services performed by Athletico shall be billed to the client at a rate equal to thirty dollars per hour.
And that was in this, the current contract that we have, uh, that was worked out, um, with, uh, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Navara, to make sure that the stayed within those hours, and we didn't pay anything outside the contract.
You not had to pay any.
No.
And what would those additional services be?
It's just additional time, like, additional time out, outside, um, I know there was, uh, was it?
It's hard to put a weekly number on how many hours a train gets in, it's based on the schedule.
Some of the tournaments that we have.
Heavy weeks, there are light ones in between seasons, so it was kind of a, kind of a guess.
And they service the boys and girls teams?
So our, our benefit for not bidding it out now is just the unknown of if Athletico would have audacity to raise their bid from what we're at now. Possible game would be finding somebody else out there who, on a three-year, would say three-year makes it different than one year, I mean, longevity's pretty important when it comes to business decisions.
The, the, the fact that we moved them from five percent increases every year to one percent increases every year, if they're gonna start doing a one-to-one, I, if I was at Athletico, I'd start charging us the five percent, and we're just, it's.
Yeah, their original bid was five percent increases every year, right?
Yeah, that was their original proposal, which we moved them back from, so I would, I, I mean, the relationship with them right now is very positive, it's moving forward, it's, it's providing the services that we need. My recommendation would be to stay with them for the three years and.
Is there a clause in there in case services fall off? If services don't remain at the standard that we're happy with, is there a way to? I think we're talking about a safety.
It'll be a notification.
An inability to perform.
A notification period.
Each party's obligations are in some legal receipts, if, if such party is unable to perform its obligations by reason. Yeah. Now, whenever you want to do a, a inability to perform, or you start saying that they're not holding up their things, that, that will, I will tell you right now, will probably involve legal fees.
Right.
As we prove that they're con- they're not holding up to their contract, but.
Wasn't there some concern about coverage last year when we agreed to this, but there hasn't been any coverage concerns?
Yeah, no, we didn't, and when we first went with them, I, I believe they were having a hard time finding an, an athletic trainer. But now they've got somebody, and they're sticking with that same person, correct? So. But they did have a hard time trying to find an athletic trainer in the, in the area, and if they were a little higher and, and took through, but they've solved that, so.
I think timing last year too, when you're asking them in mid-year to fit in the schedule before they have a chance to hire on, and maybe an additional, I think that puts anybody in a position to maybe not bid it out, so, because we didn't get bids last year, I think there's no reason to ask for it for this year. Cuz if I, you know, especially with students come out of college, and the timing when they come out of college, and that would be your primary ones that are gonna be on the field with these students anyways, hiring them in May to start July, or start June, or whenever they start for camps or whatever, but then you come to them in, in November, December, to a company that says, we've got all our employees lined up for this year. I think, I think you need to bid it out again.
Are they going to do that summer camp every year at no charge, or is that just this year?
No, that would be every year, that's an additional, and that would be done every year.
The summer camp's.
I mean, I, I, I get what you're saying, Mr. Green, and, and, you know, I guess my only concern would be, at this point, we then went into negotiations with them, and we got the price fixed for the three years. Um, I'm more than comfortable if it's a pleasure of the board to go back to them and say, no, we're gonna bid this out now. But, um, you know, that would've been, when we first presented this, that would've, that would've been something better to know before I negotiated with them.
Well, you didn't present it before now.
Well, we sent out that email, I mean, we did communicate that in the.
What, the other day, two days ago?
I guess the packet you didn't get in time, I apologize.
Yeah.
For that.
Knowing that there's other people doing it around here, I, if, 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 if every school in Southern Illinois went through Athletico, it'd be different. I would say let's go for it, but if there's other companies out there doing this, and.
What do you see out there, Liam?
There's others.
Better services, more, I mean, what's?
It's hard to say, we haven't used any others, SIOC for years was wonderful for us. You know, and I, I, with Sportsology, I hear good things about them as well.
Sportsology is a, is, is, is the company that, uh, would be the cheapest, but what we get from Athletico and what we got from SIOC was much more than what Sportsology is comfortable to do. And so when we started talking about what, all the games that we wanna have covered and everything, they don't do that at, at a lot of the places, was my understanding. And so really, the two that'll come and do, um.
Sportsology will do all of the games, they have trouble with having somebody here every day for practices.
But that would be included in their bid, right?
That would be the.
Well, that was just, they, they were, they were, they were not wanting to, they, they basically said, we're just not set up to do that.
But, but again, we're talking mid-year, so if.
No, I think we, we tried them after SIOC to get somebody, and Sportsology didn't wanna do it, we did, and that's why.
Sportsology covered us for the entire summer, and during football season last year, free of charge, while we were shopping.
Their issue wasn't so much the timing, it was the fact that they didn't wanna have to do all of our practices, and that's one of the services we were looking at.
And that's fine, I mean, that's one company.
They couldn't guarantee, that they could, they couldn't guarantee, give us a price and guarantee that they could do all that. That's my understanding why they didn't bid, why they didn't present a proposal.
We can go back out to bid if that's a pleasure of the board.
What's your recommendation? We need to vote on something, if you have.
The recommendation would be going with the, the contract as presented.
Is there a motion?
I have a recommendation to go with the Athletico training services contract, I have a motion. What do they know?
We'll go back out to bid.
Number four, approval of science curriculum adoption.
Yes.
The, uh. Pick one, pass him down, please. What you've got here is a spreadsheet that basically says what's in the, um, the footage underneath the packet. Three to five, after having a, a year of looking at various texts, three to five is looking at the FOS science, which is through Delta Education, six to eight is looking at Glenn Co., uh, which is on McGraw-Hill. Then the high school is with special ed, Pearson, it's AGS Biology, Physical Science, and Earth Science. The physics, conceptual physics with Pearson, and the anatomy would be the essentials of human anatomy with Pearson. Earth science would be with McGraw-Hill, uh, chemistry would be the world chemistry from Sengage, and, uh, biology would be Hoffland-Mifflin. Looking at this, the third to fifth grade, uh, is, it's a hands-on project, it's a lot of, um, kits with a lot of manipulatives. And that's why it was, uh, so expensive. The recommendation, I met with the third to fifth grade to talk about that cost, there are three units per grade level, so like, there's the structures in life, water and climate, emotion and matter in third grade. And so what I'm asking the third grade, and fourth grade, and fifth grade to do is go back and pick two. Uh, they haven't reduced time in science, so they would pick two, and that would reduce those costs by a third, and that would get us more into the price range.
So I have a question.
Yes.
Cuz those are physical science, earth science, life science, so you would be asking them to essentially drop one of those sciences. So are you, I, is the implication then that one of those is less important?
No, it's just that we were trying to stay within a, a more reasonable number. We wanted to get the, the program that the teachers wanted because we do, um, support their hands-on and whatnot, and what the idea would be is then, when we do the rotation and we get back to science again, they would get that other one.
I have another question.
Okay.
So I went through the bills. Just for April, March, and February, we spent seventy-one thousand, a hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents on athletics. And that does not include things like resurfacing the gym floor, because that could, that's not just for athletics. My question is, why is that okay? But it's not okay to spend roughly that same amount on curriculum for three grades, um, roughly fifteen classes. At twenty students a class, I figure that's about two hundred and fifty dollars per student. And that's too expensive?
Um, given the budget that we currently have, I mean, if you, if, if, if you're saying that we are supportive of this, and we want the three per grade level, then, um, we'll, we're gonna be amending the budget anyway, so we'll just have to bring it back to the board, that's fine.
I think if they spent their time to go through this, and this is what they want, that's what they should have.
All right.
Is, is the, the FOS science, you said there's kits, are those kits disposable, renewable, usable?
No, they're, they're actually, the, things will break, so over time, we'll have to replace the things that break, but there's not consumables, so there, we, we, is one of the questions we've been asked.
They said maybe a few things like plants, they might have to, um, you know, buy, get plants occasionally to, you know, to replace, but typically, they're not, they're not consumable every year.
Yes.
Well, and that was the other, that's, this is just for, this is for multiple years, we just spent this in the past three months.
And this allows for kit for every teacher, so they're not having to share anything?
Right. And the teacher's manual for the resources, for the resource teachers.
What about if we add?
Sections.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we, we've got them where, I, I believe the number that we, we requested were for the projected of, of, of more.
Okay.
So we'll be good for next year. But then, so then the recommendation will stay with what it is, and I will tell third to fifth grade to stop making decisions. They've already made one.
Is, is anyone looking into, I know we don't grant writer, but is, is this something that would fall underneath a fairly large umbrella of grants? Textbooks?
Yeah, the, the, um.
If I was a billionaire, I'd pay for them.
And I would appreciate that, no, there's really not, um, you know, grants are pretty specialized as, as, so I don't know many textbook grants.
We used to get state money for textbooks, but that's been gone.
A loan.
A lot of years.
The textbook loan program, is that the money?
Well, no, there, there was, there was that, but then there were, there was money that we could, some money that we could spend on textbooks too, and that's been so long ago, I forget the exact strings attached to that.
So I will include that in the budget amendment.
All right, so the recommendation is to go with the original, uh, textbook as presented.
So it's mine.
In, second?
And motion, sir.
Yeah, Mrs. James.
Yes.
Mrs. Dorr.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Rungy absent, um, Dr. Corley absent, Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Beaver?
Yes.
Number five, Resilient Southern Illinois Grant is an enclosure one.
This is a grant opportunity, um, the social workers have gone, this is, uh, Resilient Southern Illinois Grant, it's for, um, the ACES, the Adverse Childhood Experiences. We're dealing with a population that they can be considered trauma, although they don't like to use that word. And so there's the trauma-informed classrooms, and I don't know what their, is there a new verb for that now, Melinda, what are they, now that they don't like to use the word trauma?
I, I think that typically, they say trauma a lot, but really, the way to understand it is more about adverse childhood experiences is the, is more accurate way to talk about it.
So this was brought to Southern Illinois through the IEA, and, um, the recommendation is that we would take part of it. A lot of districts around here are.
Is there any cost to us for that?
There is a thousand-dollar cost. I believe it's just one thou- it might be per building. And I believe it's a thousand-dollar cost. But most of the training and PD is gonna be done through the CEC and the IEA. They're, they're paying for the lion's share of this.
Have a recommendation from the administration, I have a motion to approve.
Make a motion.
In a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carry. Information item number six is a student card handbook for twenty-eighteen nineteen.
Yeah, this is, uh, for your reading, it's the first reading, we'll have an action item next month, please get to me any issues that you might have with it. Of note, in the handbook, uh, item twelve point two oh is on standardized testing. Uh, not knowing what the state's going to do with standardized testing next year, I changed the verbiage to read that we will follow what the state does. I changed the verbiage to read that we will follow what the state does. Because right now, we don't know, yes.
The Yellow Page is the board policy that we wanted to update to, our first reading.
Which is the administration of medicines. The second thing is of note, which would be under five point two oh in the parent handbook is student meds. Right now, you could use a medical thing for non-prescription, we're only using prescription. You have to have a permission for prescription, and you're not allowed to have on you non- or prescription drugs. So, as much as I, I hate it, it's one of those things where a parent's gonna have to bring Advil to their kid. And then of note, of the third thing, that's really the larger change, is six point two oh. At the beginning of this year, we did the school dress code, and that's been modified and changed. So, we've got a board policy seven point two seven oh, and then those three things in the parent handbook are the big changes. This is the first reading, please read through it. Questions, concerns, comments can be sent to me, be an action item next month.
Number seven, building management plans for twenty eighteen nineteen.
Same thing, we've got the board policy, we've got then the district handbook, and then what we have is the specific management plans for each grade level, they're all in a line, all in alignment. And so, just read through that, we'll have an action item next month.
We have a meeting for an executive session.
I'm gonna make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to section two of the Open Meeting Act five ILCS one twenty slash two C to review the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodge against an employee to determine its validity, and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second. Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Rundy absent, Dr. Corley absent, Mrs. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Beal?
Yes.